Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Robertson, could you call the roll?
I would be happy to, Mr. Supervisor. Trustee Hugo?
Here.
Trustee Fike?
Here.
Trustee Raridan?
Here.
Trustee White?
Here.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Here.
Myself, of course, here. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven members present, accorum.
Thank you. And now we will move to public comment, and we have...
About the approval of the agenda, Mr. ...
I'm sorry. Motion by Ms. Hugo, supported by Mr. Fike.
Motion by Hugo, supported by Fike. Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Okay, now on to public comments.
Very good.
We just asked to keep your comments to three minutes, and we have two individuals that like to speak. First, we have April Delore. Good evening, Ms. Delore.
April Delore, Grambling Township. I'm here tonight because I live in Grambling Township. I live in a neighborhood called National Estates, and we have a concern over there with the Dort Highway entrance into our neighborhood off of Edward Street. It's really dark down Dort Highway, and I did email with somebody with the last name Sears.
Mr. Sears, our DPW director.
Yes, I did talk to Hi. So he, I know you guys are aware of it, but our concern is not only the fact that it's very dark, but people drive down Dort Highway very fast coming off the freeway, and the turn lane coming down past Walmart ends, right? So then there's no turn lane going into our neighborhood, and we have to sit in the lane that people are flying down, and sometimes you have to bail and just keep going because people are just moving so fast, that you're afraid that you're gonna get rear-ended all the time. And it's, and it's dark, and it's, you just never know. And I know I've lived in the neighborhood for almost 13 years now, and I know my first two, three, four years living there, there was accidents there all the time, and I do believe that somebody has been killed over there. I can't be 100% positive, but I think that there was during that time period. And I know that there was several car accidents. There used to be a railing, I believe, right there on the corner of Silver, but they took all that out. They like cleared trees, they took railings up because there were so many accidents. There was, used to be a fence there around somebody's yard. So my concern is just the fact that it's very dark. You can't even see going down Dort Highway into Walmart, and you can't barely see even getting into my neighborhood. If I didn't know where my entrance to my neighborhood was, I would probably overshoot it every single time. And then the fact that it's just, is, we really need a turn lane there, something to make us feel safe, you know, from people passing us, is all. So, I mean, those are our two concerns, especially if you, if you know anything about the neighborhood, trying to get out on Dort Highway during the, during the middle of the day or early in the morning is a nightmare on top of that. I don't know what the solution can be. I'm just saying that 13 years later, there's something that just needs a solution. And then the roads, never, like going down Dort Highway when it's like gonna be like tomorrow, they're never plowed or taken care of early in the morning. I leave early to go to work, and I can tell you, they're always icy and not plowed. So, those are my concerns, that's all. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. And just as a point of information, the roads are maintained by the county, so the plowing and that will rely on the county tomorrow morning to solve for.
When I came back from that last ice storm where Oakland County, I came from White Lake and I was driving through that last week, Oakland County was perfect. In Genesee County, it was a mess. It was a nightmare. I was like, wow, that was quite the transition.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Delore. Now we have Ms. Patty Walden who would like to speak. Good evening, Ms. Walden.
Thank you.
Good evening. Nice to meet all of you. I live on Springdale Boulevard, off Grambling, off Edward, off Dort Highway. So I live down one block from April, but I was in a car accident at that intersection five years ago, and I was leaving Walmart, coming back, and like you said, it's so dark at the entrance of Walmart, even to get in there off Dort Highway, but it's really dark, and there is a street light that's very dim, and then there's two, another street light passed Edward that's, half the time that doesn't work, but it doesn't really be needed there anyways, and her issues about the turning lane is bad, and I really feel like we need a street light there, actual stop and go. I know it's close to Hill Road, but reason that I've been so concerned about it, and I have contacted several people up here over the years about it, because it was five years ago when I had my accident, and I was sitting there to turn into Edward, and I was at a dead stop to turn, and a woman hit me going 50 miles an hour. She didn't even brake. She, and I, and I, so when I do go that way now, I'm so hesitant. I'm always checking my rearview, I'm always pumping my brakes. I try to go different routes. You can get off, I can go downhill road to Porter Road, or I can go down Gibson or Reed. I can go way out of my way to get to my house that's a block away. But it was very traumatizing. It changed my whole life. I missed the birth of my granddaughter. I was, I had severe head injuries and head trauma. I didn't, wasn't able to drive a car for over a year. I had to go to speech therapy. I couldn't even use my cellphone. I couldn't even go to the store. I had to get rides everywhere. I went to physical therapy. It was, I went to, I used to go to work every day. We have a family-owned business. I couldn't go to work anymore. I lost two years of work. Just my, my abilities have changed a lot since then. Every accident is a problem. Every accident is, you know, trauma to someone in some way. So every time I'm sitting in my backyard and my backyard faces Dort Highway, I hear crashes all the time, all summer. A little bit less in the winter for some reason, but in the summer, maybe because I'm outside more in the summer. But there's a lot of accidents there. So I have called here, I've called different places. You guys have recommended. They said that Dort Highway is a state-owned road, and I don't get anywhere with anybody, it seems like. So I had even offered to go door-to-door in the neighborhood and talk to every neighbor in the neighborhood and fill out petitions. I mean, I'm sure there's more than just her and I that are so concerned. And then when you try to leave the neighborhood, I mean, you can sit there forever because you are so scared because you've had accidents and you've heard them, you're scared to pull out. It's just like, I don't care if I have to sit here 10 minutes. I'm not pulling out until it's clear both ways. And like April said, the, I believe it starts at Grand Blackwood Expressway on Dort Highway. They come so fast down there, and then they don't, they don't slow down until they get to Hill Road.
We will, we will pass on your concerns. We have our police chief here, we've got our DPW director, so...
I was told they were going to do a, where they go to that, go to the areas and they watch it to see what the problem with the traffic flow is. I don't know if that was, that was ever completed or not either. I was told they were going to do that.
We can get an update on that from our...
Investigation of that area.
Our DPW director is shaking his head, yes, so we'll, we'll hear from him in a few minutes.
Whatever I can do to help this along or to talk to neighbors or other people in the area, I'd be willing to do it.
Before you leave, I'll ask our DPW director to get your contact information. Well, we actually have it here, so we'll, we'll be in communication with you on that.
I feel so bad because every time I sit in there, I'm thinking, how mad, how bad that changed my life and how many accidents I've already heard there that's changing other people's lives. It's not a...
We were told that so much accidents had happened in the past, so that's why we're not ever doing it.
Yes, someone told me that. I don't know who I spoke to, but they said, "Has to be so many accidents before we look into it." I said, "One's enough." So...
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
We will pass on your information, and we will be in touch with you, Mr. Sears will. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Delore. Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Okay, we will close public comment and ask for approval of our consent agenda. Hugo makes that motion, supported by Mr. Fike.
Motion by Hugo, supported by Fike, consent agenda. Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Under Old Business, our strategic plan update regarding campus, the township campus plan. Tongue-tied here. Good evening, Mr. Sears.
Good evening, everyone. So I just want to give you a brief update. Previously, we had talked to the board about what our future plans are for our campus, specifically this building and any other elements that we might want to see throughout in the future. So what we did is we put together a strategic plan. One of our key objectives is to be, to complete a new township campus master plan. We have a current master plan, but I believe it's dated to the early 2000s, so it's a little out of date. Our operations have changed a little bit, our needs have changed, so we think it's probably a good time to go through and update that now. As you can see, the strategic plan data was in your packet. I'll just go through that real briefly. I won't talk about everything on here, but some of the steps that we're gonna have to take are to find professional services. This is something that we're going to have to engage in architects and engineers to help us with, to determine, you know, what our building needs are and what the feasibility and constructability is for everything that we want to accomplish. We're gonna have to determine what the scope of the master plan is. How much do we want to study? How much of this property do we want to study? Later in the agenda, there's a, an agenda item for purchasing an additional piece of property that kind of rounds out our campus very nicely. So how do we want to incorporate that into our future use? What buildings are we gonna study? Are we gonna study this building? Do we need to look at the police station again? And then how long are we gonna take to do it? We should put a timeline on this. I don't want to take two years to do it, so hopefully it's something we can get done in six months to a year. We're gonna have to investigate the property a little bit, the existing property, because things do change over time. We're gonna want to survey our current property limits, look at how the wetlands may have changed. There were some existing wetlands, and those do change over time. And then, so probably some geotechnical work also. What does the soil make up? Do some soil borings throughout and see what, where the constructability, where our options are and where to build if we need to build in the future. We should probably look at our space needs again. We did a space needs assessment with Redstone Architects in 2018 or 19, and that's very complete, but we want to look at that again because we're a constantly evolving organization. So has something changed with a, with a department? Are we gonna be bigger in the future? Are we gonna be smaller? It's something to look at now so that we can plan the size of a new building in the near future. We're gonna want to look at our existing buildings, see if they can be reused. Can we just renovate this building and stay here? Can it be reused for something like a community center or leased office space or something like that? And then we're gonna want to look at the rest of the property, too. What other elements do we want to exist on our property? Do we want parkland, trails? We've talked about trails around the pond out back, you know, making it more of a park like setting. Who do we want on the property? Do we want to look at just Township Hall? Is there a need for more parks and rec space? So on and so forth. And then finally, we'll deliver a final campus plan. Hopefully, we'll have a site layout that this board feels the direction we're going to go in. Hopefully, it'll be a good direction for future boards well into the future. How much of the construction cost's going to be? What's the timeline for construction? When do we want to start this project? And then how are we gonna pay for it, obviously? It's gonna be a big deal also. So we've already started having some conversations with some consultants on what it's going to take to get this done, and hopefully we can have a proposal to the board here shortly in the next month or so.
Just, Mr. Limina, when is the bond expire on the, when is the bond paid off for the Police Department building?
2031 for the Police Department. So one of the things that we always said in our planning purposes is that that's when we would be looking at a potential, you know, relocation for the township facilities. I can tell you that with the growth of the township and just, you know, the Police Department opened in 2007 or 2008, somewhere in there, and it never thought it would be this long. We thought we'd have that new township office built on that parcel to the south of it way before this, and now we're faced with, even though we're building the new DPW and Fire Hall, how much room that we realize we don't have in this building for our space needs right now. Big one is with the Clerk's Department, there's been so many changes to the laws around elections, and now we're gonna kick off nine days of early voting, so I've had some conversations with Dave and with his deputy clerk, Lynn, about how are we even gonna execute that? Where's the space gonna go? What are we gonna do? So in 2023, we're already gonna have to do some reshuffling. Again, it may mean we're gonna have to seek storage from somewhere so we can expand somewhat because they literally have to have the room to be able to run those elections. And the nine days of early voting, in addition to all of the no reason absentee voting, has just really put a strain on it. So we have to figure out a way to make that work. You know, failure's not an option here, so we will make it work. It's just a matter of having those conversations now, the conversation that started with the new facilities under construction, the property we're gonna ask you to consider later in this meeting. We're all kind of coming together, but it may mean that this board is gonna be the kickoff board that's gonna start putting those plans in place, that we're not gonna wait till 2031 and then start planning. It may mean that just the sheer volume of work that we're doing here is gonna initiate that sooner, so that those conversations could be that you're making those decisions way before 2031. That construction might have to be happening, you know, in just a couple of years from now.
And I think, you know, our thoughts with this area of the township as well, being one of the older areas with our businesses, our business district that we're forming, you know, we've talked about having a park-like setting here on the campus and some pathways leading from one building to the next, what have you, and I think that plays well in terms of, you know, we don't have a park in this area from what I've seen as far as schematics. If we have the property to do it and it makes the campus accessible, then I think that makes sense, too. So, anything for Mr. Sears? Yes, Mr. ...
Not, not on the specific agenda item, but I know that, you know, the opportunity for public comment is not intended for a back-and-forth between ourselves and constituents. But since you're here, and with regard to the Dort Highway situation, you and I have talked, and I know that, that there are lighting issues that you're already pursuing at Dort and, and is it Gibson?
All of Dort Highway.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't know precise all the full, could you speak to that for just a moment?
Sure, I have spoke with both these young ladies previously.
Well, I thought maybe that might be the case, so forgive me for being redundant.
Consumers Energy is currently designing street lighting for Dort Highway from Grand Blank Road all the way north to Hill Road. So obviously, we're well aware that that is a very dark corridor. Supervisor Bennett has brought it to our attention a lot, especially with the amount of traffic that goes in and out of Walmart. There is no street lights right there, and it is extremely dangerous. So Consumers Energy right now is studying that. They had to do a photometric survey, which they just completed, and they are currently putting together plans for that. It does take them some time to complete that. This is a pretty big project also. Generally, when I talk to them, I talk to them about putting three or four or five street lights in a neighborhood somewhere. This is gonna be, you know, 30, 40, maybe 50 street lights, depending on the vision we see for that lighting. So that is coming. Hopefully, you know, we can get that ball rolling, depending on cost, and if we figure out how to pay for it, because we, the township will obviously have to pay for that, you know, hopefully we can get that ball rolling this summer or fall. In regards to a traffic signal, I have talked to the road commission. They have said that they will look into their past traffic studies. They weren't successful previously for warranting a traffic signal there. Because it is a state highway, there are regulations on how close traffic signals can be to each other. Because we have one at Dort Highway and Hill, and then Dort Highway and Gibson, there's not much spacing there. So they were gonna look into it again. If they said it did warrant a new traffic signal or a new study, they would let me know because we do have to formally request a traffic study for a new signal. So in that case, the police, the chief police will put together, the police chief will put together some data for incidents that occurred there, and the road commission will study that. As they said, it does have to meet a threshold on incidents before it warrants a traffic signal. I don't really understand that reasoning either, but there is science and engineering into it, so...
Even with, even with the traffic lights, there's...
I'm not sure in a turn lane, but they look at all those options whenever...
Even a turn light would be great.
Yeah.
Even with the traffic lights, we have some, I saw Saturday or Sunday, there was a pretty bad accident at Dort and Hill, I believe. Dort and Saginaw?
Yeah.
The, and it, there's no, is, there's no existing traffic study being done right now on Dort, is there?
Not right now. They were going to review the one that they had previously done. I have not heard back from them. I do know they had a, a change in guard there at the road commission for the engineering department, so it may take me reaching back out to them.
Reed is also another intersection that probably once a month that you're, somebody that, and I know there's probably plenty of accidents there from seeing...
...all the accidents, like two of them, and all the construction. Like literally, like two of them in our neighborhood, and it's all the same, all the kinds, and there's no way out.
All right.
I just, just since we're talking, talking about this, the turn lane, though, I think that might be the easiest solution. I know that would involve some road reconstruction.
Yeah.
But I don't know if that's something maybe you could just mention to them, because it's just a matter of extending it a little farther.
I mean, absolutely, we could definitely mention that. If we, if we end up requesting a new traffic study, I think that's something we will mention when we put that letter together. Again, it's M dot road.
Right.
So it's gonna fall on M dot to do any kind of work like that. And, you know, I don't know who would pay for it at that point.
So really, the best place to contact is your state reps, too, with regard to, to that intersection with it being M dot funded, so...
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sears.
Thank you.
Thank you, by the way.
You're welcome. Okay, next on the agenda is, anything else on campus plan, Mr. Limina?
No.
Okay, all right. Under New Business, the board will consider a motion to approve zoning case number 674F, development standards for the GC zoning district and general commercial zoning district and development standards for storage containers. Good evening, Mr. Smith.
Good evening. At the February 2nd meeting, the planning commission held a public hearing on the zoning amendments that you just mentioned, the increase in building height for general commercial, section 3.1.14.D., added definitions in section 2.2, and update on the accessory structures in section 5.2.10. The planning commission recommended to the township board with a six to zero vote on all three of those items. For the section for general commercial, to amend that section, what we've requested is that the building height be changed from 30 to 40 feet and that the stories be switched from two to three stories. With the amount of development that we could see potentially coming, we felt that that was a necessary change. One other thing was is that the planning commission wanted to add, if it was next to residential, that more of a setback for those buildings, if they exceeded that 30 feet, that they were given more of a setback next to the residential, just to protect the residential. For sections, 2.2 for definitions, we've had a rash of shipping container issues, and I felt that this was the time that we needed to address those. So we added definitions for what a shipping container is and a definition for a storage pod or portable storage container. That way, we can define them and then address them further. And then in section 5.2.10, we added that shipping containers and storage pods are prohibited, except that one storage container pod may be permitted for 30 days per year with the approval of myself.
Commercial as well as residential, those would be allowed for 30 days, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any thoughts, concerns? Okay, and it was six to nothing on the vote at the planning commission?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
Is a motion in order, Mr. Supervisor?
Yes, unless Mr. Smith has anything more to add.
Uh, that's it.
Then I'll make that motion, if you'll permit me.
Supported by Mr. Fike.
Supported by Mr. Fike, okay. Item 7A, trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Item B, under New Business, the board will consider resolution 23-7 for approval of a purchase agreement for parcel number 12-05-578-075 and authorize the superintendent to execute the agreement for $100,000 pending the outcome of an environmental study on the property. Mr. Limina, heard?
Sure, so it's part of our, it's part of our discussion about our campus plan, and we talked about looking at the big map and squaring those pieces off. It just so happened that one of the properties came up. It's also a property, as we addressed Blight in the township, that hasn't exactly, there's a lot of brush debris, things that's been used as a landscape for now, or has been for a number of years. In fact, it's been one of my pet peeves when I drive past it, and it just, it's not like they were doing anything in violation, but it just wasn't that attractive. But it, the biggest point is that it really squares off our campus plan, and kind of like when we looked at the Playland property, the time to buy the property is when it's for sale. Well, we saw the sign come up. We had a discussion about, you know, we'll, we'll take a look at it, we'll find out what they're going for, and we'll bring it to the board. Well, to find out what it was going for, Supervisor Bennett picked up the phone and called the realtor, and they came back and said, "Well, we got two offers on the property, and it's going to the sellers tomorrow for consideration." So we had to act fast if we wanted to get an offer in, otherwise the opportunity would have been gone.
So we actually went over and made an offer contingent upon board approval and environmental study. The board would choose not to, we can always get out of it, but put down a small deposit. Mr. Fike?
Is there, do you know about the history of that property? Might there be an environmental concern over there?
So I don't believe there is, although we're gonna have to, we've asked AKT Peerless, who did the environmental study over on the Playland property, how quick that they would be able to get a turnaround on it. But I do know that from just a brief amount of research, what I know is that the parcel prior to the current ownership consisted of a whole variety of all of these, this parcel, the 1.95 acres, those are all small residential parcels. So the history on the property, and until they, I get it back from the environmental assessment, appears to be, they were, if there was anything built on there, that they were residential homes. It was all residential parcels, and then they combined everything when they purchased it, and it's been a landscaping. So as far as the realtor knew as well, the seller's disclosure, there's never been anything, no underground storage tanks, nothing of that nature. Obviously, it's a landscape business. I would expect that there may be some surface contamination, oil change, you know, fuel, something like that, but I would expect it to be very, very minor. But again, based upon what we know and the history that we're aware of, we don't anticipate that there's gonna be anything, but we did want the phase one study done, and we made that as a contingency, that if it came back and it was unacceptable, then we would be able to rescind our offer.
It's a good business strategy is to always do an environmental whenever you're buying property. I think Mr. Laddie would agree with that as well. Yes, Mr. White?
It's just phase one, not a phase two?
Yeah, it would depend if, if they found anything in a phase one study. Trustee White, then, we would then come back to the sellers and request an extension and the ability to do so.
And I guess the other question is, do you plan on lifting out the building, or would it possibly be a short-term storage? There's a hole bar on it, not to say that.
It, it.
Something, but I, it could be in terrible condition.
It's a great question. We haven't inspected it yet, but the realtor said that he believed it to be of no value.
From the road, I'm not sure how much value it is.
Yes.
Is this the same piece that Mr. Laddie sent us, the proposal copy on?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. It's actually, as you go out the back drive, if any of you go out from the police department, it's directly to the right. There's a car replace, car repair business immediately to your right, and then it's next to that, and it's basically piles of wood and tree stumps and.
And that we own, from the side of the police department, that parcel, we own up to the backside of it. There is some wetlands, and there is a county drain that goes through there, but we knew that, you know, prior to that, that will never be built on that area. But I think, and obviously, we still would leave the automotive repair facility and the small section between our service drive and this parcel. But if that property ever became up, then the township would have the ability to finally, you know, square off the entire parcel. That may be a great spot, as we alluded to earlier, but for a park or to be able to get our walking trails around the facility be another nice amenity for something up here on the north side, because again, we've talked with this board, as part of our strategic plan is to just try to do something up here on the north end to make sure they see the investment, not just on the south end of the township.
Any thoughts or concerns, questions, anybody in favor of it? Okay, you making the motion, Ms. Hugo?
Sure.
Motion by Hugo.
Supported by Raridan.
By Raridan, supported by Raridan. Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Feike?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Okay, and we have a resolution on that already, so. Item C, the board will consider a motion to authorize the purchase of a new backstop and sideline fencing for fields two through five from action traffic maintenance in the amount of one hundred and fifteen thousand seventy-six dollars and fifty-four cents and authorize the superintendent to execute the agreement. Good evening, Ms. Limina.
Hi, good evening. So we had this set aside as a millage project for this year. It's been in need for a while. All the fencing was put in, I believe, in the nineties. We've already replaced the lower quad, so seven, eight, nine, and ten, they were replaced a while ago. The fence starts to, you know, bow out, and then there's also the, where it connects to the upper part, that starts to peel out, so it kind of leaves the fencing there, and it's just, it's become a hazard. So we had it set aside for one seventy-five in the millage this year. This one came back at one fifteen, so, you know, lower than we were, even we.
Yeah, it's much-needed work out there, I know that.
And this will be great, too, because it'll make the framework so we can put dugouts, hopefully get the shade for seven, eight, nine, or for two, three, four, and five, which will be great, so.
Very good. Director Raridan?
Make the motion.
Okay, okay. Supported by Ms. Hugo?
Motion by Raridan, supported by Hugo. Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Feike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Limina. Item D, the board will consider a motion to approve the purchase of an international H V six oh seven S P A dump truck chassis from Tri-County Trucks using my deal pricing of ninety-nine thousand four hundred ninety-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents and authorize township superintendent to execute all related purchase orders. Mr. Sears?
Thank you, Scott. So in our two thousand twenty-three capital improvement plan and budget, we plan to replace one of our heavy-duty dump trucks that we use for the sewer and water department and plow our streets with. With, you know, everything that we're seeing this year with and last year for supply shortages and stuff, we figured out that we cannot actually build this truck this year. But in order to build it next year, we do need to order the chassis for it now. The chassis are anywhere from twenty-four to, or twelve to twenty-four months out on ordering right now. If we approve this and place it, we'll be put on a waiting list, basically. The vendor, who is a my deal vendor, which means they were already pre-bid by the state of Michigan, doesn't know how many trucks will be allocated to him. So it could be that, you know, they allocate three hundred trucks to him, or it could be they only allocate a hundred to him, he has no idea. So approving this purchase tonight and getting on that list will at least ensure that we get a chassis next year and that we can then proceed with purchasing the dump box and the plow blade and everything else next year, whenever we actually go to build the truck. So as the agenda item says, the purchase price as bid to the program is ninety-nine thousand four hundred and ninety-eight dollars. This replaces a truck that's currently sixteen years old, which, well, I'm sorry, twenty years old, which we have, we, whenever I came here, we put in to plan a fifteen-year replacement schedule. We are almost on that replacement schedule. This is one of two trucks we have left that are at this age. So, you know, letting it go another five years really increases that critical risk of cash traffic failure for that truck. And we keep our snowplow fleet pretty slim here in the township, so just losing one truck throws off all of our operations. So hopefully, we can get this process going, and we have extremely good mechanics, so I'm confident they'll be able to keep the truck going for years until we can get the new one built.
So what section of the township would not get plowed if one?
It's not what section won't get plowed, it's how long it'll take to plow, because that just means we have to stretch out our resources a little bit.
What are votes? Yes, I'm all good.
We won't get into that.
Okay. Any thoughts, concerns, questions? Okay, Mr. Feike makes the motion.
Motion by Feike.
Supported by Mr. White?
Supported by Mr. White. Trustee Feike?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Item E, the board will consider a motion to approve the MERS defined contribution plan amendments. Mr. Limina?
What these are required to do, these amendment forms, is to make our MERS defined contribution plan documents fit with the negotiated changes in the police contracts. We've always had a defined contribution plan, or had for a number of years. However, the defined contribution plan didn't start until you were in the program for one year before contributions started going in. It basically served a one-year probationary period. That is not what we negotiated into the defined contribution plan with these changes, partly because we need to be competitive. There is still a vesting period that goes with it. But we don't wait a year before we start making contributions according to our new collective bargaining agreements. In order, again, like I said, for us to be competitive, these amendments will allow us to change the documents so that the vesting period remains, but the contributions, you don't have a probationary period of one year before the contributions start, basically.
Any concerns? Thoughts? Mr. White?
Make a motion.
Okay.
Mr. White motions.
Supported by Ms. Hugo.
Supported by Ms. Hugo. Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Feike?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you. Item F, the board will consider a motion to authorize the superintendent to contract with Romner Stover and Associates LLC to prepare a salary survey for the upcoming negotiations for the AFSMI Chapter V and W agreements that will expire July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Which, much like we did for the, going into the police negotiations, we had a salary survey done from Gerard and Associates at that time. I had spoken with them about completing this as well, but in the interest of a quick turnaround, we looked at the M M L. We looked at several other companies out there to talk about doing these salary surveys. And the M M L couldn't take us on because they already have too many on their books. It's been interesting. I think what it does, it highlights the competitiveness in the market. After COVID, it's put a lot of pressure on wages, and so you've seen a lot of people doing salary surveys. We didn't have a tremendous response. Gerard and Associates is still willing to provide us with a bid on this. If we're interested, not sure that it can be completed in the same timeframe as the gentleman that we talked to here with Romner Stover and Associates. I recommended that we go through it. The cost was, is probably not going to be much difference on another bid. Just we couldn't, there was no way we could get like three bids even on this one. I'm, be prepared to hold this one off and go to try to get the Gerard and Associates bid in before the board makes a decision. However, I don't really think that there's going to be a difference in cost. I don't believe there will be a difference in the ultimate end product. We're going to go into negotiations in probably June of this year for a July expiration date. New contract goes into effect August first. These guys guarantee that they can get C information back. And the scope of the project is all of the positions that are represented by AFSMI Chapter W and Chapter V, which are everyone that's in those units that are going to be negotiations.
So, so the beauty of these studies is they look at similar municipalities, whether it's population, taxable value, staff size, all those kinds of things, right?
Yeah, you know, you're trying to, everybody calls things a little bit differently. So it depends on even, you look at like the D P W workers who would be involved in here, the service technicians, the clerks, clerk one, clerk two, all of those positions in Chapter V with more specialized positions, it's the, you know, staff accountant, senior staff accountants. You know, those positions are D P W assistant directors positions, all of our assessing positions. They have to go out and try to find positions that are comparable, because what we call a position may or may not match up. So they look at it across that, then they look at it by S T V and taxable value, they look at full service, how many employees you have, what your population is, and they really try to find something. They'll also take a look at our benefits, so it's not just looking at wages, looking at the overall compensation to compare what you're actually paying for what you're getting from a benefit standpoint. So I think they'll be fairly valuable for us to be able to go in and know where we compare. And like in the past, I've shared this information while we're in negotiations with the unions, because I don't think, if we have it, we show them, like, this is where our target, this is where we're trying to get. It's not a secret. We're really trying to be, make sure that we're competitive so that we can continue to retain and attract the best talent that we can.
Thoughts, concerns, issues? Anybody think it's a good idea?
I think it's a good idea.
All right, somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Supported by Mr. Feike.
Motion by Robertson, supported by Feike. Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Feike?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Okay. And I'm going to ask, the next item on the agenda is discussing the superintendent's performance evaluation for twenty twenty-two. We do that here in open session, or how do we do that? How do you prefer, Mr. Limina?
It's up to Mr. Limina to choose.
Yeah, I've always done it in open session, and just for the board's information. Law decides whether if anyone who's going to have a performance evaluation, they can determine whether to have it in an open or closed session. It's really the employee's prerogative. I've always chosen to do mine in open session, because I think it's fair for the taxpayers of the township to know how well I'm doing my job, number one, and if there's any issues, that we get an opportunity to discuss them in public so that they're fully apprised of it. You guys all do have a hard copy of the performance evaluation with the comments and the ratings. Typically, we've never just gone through point by point, but really, I'm here to, it's, it's your opportunity to bring up what you'd like to bring up. If you want to go through it and talk about the thirteen different metrics that we're rated on, or if there's any specific items that you guys would like to bring up, if you have any questions that I can help address. But first and foremost, I know nobody really loves performance evaluations. I know it's kind of a pain, so I really appreciate the participation. All seven of you weighed in and provided me some excellent feedback. I take it to heart, and I truly am appreciative of the time it takes to fill it out. And then with David's office as well, compiling all the information into one document, so the document you have before you. And again, thank you for doing this. Appreciate your, your feedback and happy to answer any questions or go through anything that you guys would like to go through.
I think I want to read a few of the comments from these, if that's acceptable to the board, on a few of the items. Because I, I think we do have an outstanding person in you, Mr. Limina, I haven't seen here, so I want to read what some of our board members have said. So regarding quality of work, one comment is our, our finances are in great shape, and we present a competent image to the public unlike many local governments in Genesee County. Work is, this is all under the title of quality of work. Work is excellent, especially on collective bargaining agreements. Dennis has negotiating knowledge none of us have. Dennis consistently produces work product that stands above and beyond what I see in other municipalities. Board comments regarding time management and productivity. I guess I'll read a few comments also. On that first, and all state and federal reporting accurate on time. Collective bargaining negotiations for P D completed successfully with the goal of achieving closure of the MERS defined benefit plan. Board presented updates throughout the process, or provided updates to the board for clear decision-making. You know, and this is only the second time in our history, I think, that we've completed that police negotiation before the deadline, I think. Under time management and productivity, Dennis meets deadlines reporting budgeting and managing, management. Sheer number of projects and workload dictates that time is used judiciously. Dennis accomplishes this feat and produces great work despite time constraints, consistently meets all deadlines for reporting budgeting, project management. Stated deadlines for strategic goals are good, but we are off in a couple of them, and I think we're hitting the mark most. But let's see. See, there is cooperative ethos at the township, which is refreshing to see. Dennis believes in teamwork and has developed strong team amongst our staff. As the coach, he leads by example and works to identify and help strengthen any weaknesses in the team. Under leadership, rock-solid leader, we can learn from his great skills. He has respect of departments. I'm not sure how he juggles so many things. Coaching and mentoring are definite strength for Dennis. In the face of challenges, Dennis rides it to the occasion. Under internal and external communication, skillful communicator, handles public quite well, knows when and what to say to the media. Communication is also a great strength that Dennis brings to this township. Direct and clear messages or communication are valued. Under customer service, positive face for the community and its business development. Recognize that customers come first and goes the extra mile to make customers feel valuable and appreciated. Dennis is willing to meet with any and all residents, developers, business owners, and community leaders. That means people that aren't happy as well as people that are happy once in a while. Usually, there's lots of happy people, they just don't come here to tell us. So let's see. Under adaptability innovation initiative, digitizing old records, enhancing I T capabilities is a great idea. Continuous improvement is a hallmark of the philosophy and culture I've worked to establish and maintain in Grambling Township, is Dennis' comment. Dennis is constantly looking for ways to improve efficiency, excellence, excellent strategic plan updates. Grambling Township is an example of innovation, adaptability, and taking initiative. Dennis fosters all of these attributes. It's a major reason for our township, or major reason our township is known for these. Under judgment and decision-making, Dennis can quickly make right decisions under pressure, resolve decision-making during challenging situations. Under safety, Dennis is first, encourages others to promote the safest work environment possible. Safety and limiting risk is always a top concern for Ms. Limina, but does not stifle our ability to be innovative. Just a couple more. Training and professional development. Dennis is a self-motivated person who seeks out job-related training and professional development activities. Professional development is an ongoing activity for Dennis, and he promotes this with his staff and board as well. Fiscal responsibility, getting additional funds from the county for township roads. Dennis is a good steward of the township's money and resource. Dennis takes the utmost care when it comes to fiscal responsibility, unfunded liabilities, and bonding and everyday expenditures. Number twelve, financial management and future planning. He takes the lead role in future planning, strategic plans for departmental operations, spot on when dealing with the cumbersome budget. Dennis has developed a very strong culture of fiscal responsibility amongst township staff. The budgeting process is taken very seriously. Results of this fiscal awareness and planning is evident in the strong fiscal position of the township. Last comments here, under managing and supervising other. Giving township employees the ability to advance or be promoted within encourages everyone to do a good job and helps the spirit. to advance or be promoted within encourages everyone to do a good job and helps the spirit decor in the workplace. Dennis is proactive in the coaching and leading the township team. His professionalism, emotional intelligence, intuition and people skills are assets that he brings to the township. He is respected and held in high regard by his department leaders and staff. So, those are a few of the comments. So, thank you, Dennis. Looks like our board pretty much unanimous feeling that you're very much appreciated, and we thank you for your service. So, yes.
Let me just, if I could just reinforce what you said, as you were mentioning these comments and the reference to all the different issues that we've dealt with and that Dennis has dealt with, the sheer number of them are extraordinary, and the fact that they've all gone so well. I really, you've done an excellent, excellent job, Dennis, on a multitude of issues. Obviously, you know my interest in the, dealing with the unfunded liabilities and getting the labor issues resolved favorably. That's a huge issue as a standalone issue, but with everything else that's going on, we certainly had to go through a study for a new chief, which ended up going very, very well. Just a number, one thing after another, after another. I can't say strongly enough how pleased I am with, with your performance and the, and the esprit de corps that you have, have had with and with and encourage with the staff, that the morale is high and it continues to be high, and with good reason. So, that's as much as I'll say, and I thank you, Mr. Supervisor.
Thank you. Any other comments regarding to Mr. Limina's review? Okay, yes, Mr. Limina?
And I just want to point out, I'd really be remiss if I didn't, but it's, it's the staff that's here every day, it's, it's the department heads, it's, it's everybody here. You know, I appreciate the comments, like the sheer number of things that we do, but we, we are running a forty-five million dollar annual operation, and we have so many things going on between our road projects and, you know, policing and fire, and it's, it's all the people that are behind us that, that, I really appreciate your comments and, and I'm very proud of the work that we do here, but it really, it's because of the group of people who you see sitting in the chairs here and the people who are in this office that, that make this happen, because it's, it's not me, I couldn't do it by myself, and it's, I just, we have such an excellent and amazing team here of high-quality caliber people. I stand Grand Blank Township against anybody else, man, I'm telling you, we have this amazing team here, and so thanks to them, I get the accolades, but it's thanks to these folks doing their jobs every day that is the reason why I get the accolades I do.
We appreciate that, and we, we agree, we will put our staff up against any township or municipality, and as a team, you guys are phenomenal.
Thank you.
Very good.
So we are going to move into future agenda items. If there's anything that anybody wants to make sure we include in future agenda, otherwise we keep working our strategic plan. We've added the beautification, I'll mention a few things on that in just a minute for my report, but Ms. Hugo stepped out for a minute. Mr. Raridan, anything, Dan? Okay. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yeah, we have a, you, you guys should all have a copy of it.
It was handed out before the meeting, right?
Right, and I apologize that the artwork here is terrible.
Underneath your folder.
The example, they, they do have this in color, and it looks so much better, but what it is, is a Wendy, the city.
Manager.
Manager, or assistant manager, whatever she is.
Manager.
Has gotten a grant, or potentially gotten a grant, for a couple of benches, and they are, as I say, that's what you have a picture of there. What they are looking for is our approval or our agreement to provide a third of the cost. If we approve this, and it, it doesn't automatically go through, but if we approve this, then the, then we would put up a third, the city would put up a third, and the grant would put up a third. So, the only question that I have on this thing, reading through it, and it's something that Dennis had mentioned earlier, it doesn't specify exactly where these things are going. In other words, whether they're going on the library or on the commons. And I guess I would want that clarified, because the commons are not ours.
Doesn't it say the commons right there?
Yeah.
Two benches would grace the entrance to, of Grand Blank Commons.
Yeah, well, that's the entrance to Grand Blank Commons. Again, the, the commons aren't really ours, those are city, that's a city.
Used to be ours.
Yes.
It was annexed by the city.
Yeah.
Believe it or not, but it is what happened, is that, we owned it before, and I think the boundary commission ruled for the city.
Correct. Anyway, my question on this, I guess, is it, when you say it's going at the entrance to the commons, is this the entrance where you can see it from the library, or what, you know?
Through you, Mr. Supervisor, to the treasurer. Okay, is it, is this on, is this, would these benches be on the, the library property or the commons property?
Reading this.
But if it's, you said entrance to the commons, I was trying to find a distinction there if there was one.
They're using park dollars for their portion of it, for the city, according to this letter, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm thinking that if they're using park dollars, it's probably park property, I would guess. Maybe not, but I know the city, do they contribute to our parks? Because I know when we originally cast a deal, they were going to pay a percentage of wages or something like this, right?
They are, they are contractually bound to pay a percentage of programming activities.
Okay. Is that happening, or where are we at with that?
I'm gonna actually, Melissa, do you have any, you have any update on whether or not they've remitted their, their share of that?
When we spoke about it before, ended the partnership between the city and the township, they were billed at that time for that, and then going forward, I think it was twenty twenty-two that we have to bill them for yet, so we haven't billed them yet.
Okay.
We haven't received anything since, since it was finalized.
So they, they were, we, when we, when we basically divided up the assets, we, we allocated ourselves that share, and so I think it's, it's come time now for their next contribution. And, and Ms. Roberts has indicated that we haven't, it hasn't occurred yet, but, but we haven't, we haven't invoiced them for that yet, so it's not moving the needle either way, like.
Well, I, I know that we've got a lot of needs at our park at bicentennial. I mean, we're scraping together whatever money we can just to try and repair some of the things that are falling apart. I mean, we had to spend over a hundred thousand dollars just to replace one of the walking bridges this past summer. We're spending, you know, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the backstops. We've got bleachers, I'm not sure, I forget what the cost is on those, but we're spending considerable amount of money at our park, so for us to contribute towards this, I'm not sure, I'd like to, but I know that we're trying to just afford the upgrades at ours. Yes?
Okay, I would suggest, number one, that we find out where is this going? Is this going in the commons, or is it going in the library? Because there's, there's a big difference to that ownership, and maybe we'll table it till I find out, I can find that out at the next meeting, but.
Everybody's acceptable with everybody?
Tableling, sure.
Okay, we'll do that. Thank you, Mr. Kilmer. Anything else? Anything else, Mr. Kilmer?
No.
Okay. Burke Robertson?
I have nothing to report.
Mr. Fike?
Nothing to report.
Mr. White? With regard to beautification, actually, several of us actually met with Vienna Township, Mr. Fike, Ms. Roberts, myself, and I know Mr. Sears was going to, but he was busy, but we had a very good meeting, I felt. We learned a lot about how they've done this beautification, and while we might not be able to get up to their speed immediately, I think there's some things we can start doing, and we can progress to where we want to be. One of the interesting things that they do is they actually took a section with potted large pots and put out an RFQ for, for that a couple of years ago, and the same person's been doing it, but they have an area where they just have the pots with flowers in them setting out by the road. They have other areas where they have actually tilled the soil near the expressway exits. So they're, they're doing the things that we talked about undertaking, and it gave us a little bit more vision of how to get there, and it may take us a few years to get up to speed, but I think there's a few things we can do, maybe this summer, but I think we need to meet again as a group and just take in whatever thing that was said and see what we actually can afford to do, and it really wasn't cost prohibitive. I was actually quite surprised by, by the cost, the numbers that we looked at, and what they were able to do with that kind of money, and actually, they paid everything done, whereas we have some volunteers that are willing to do some of it, but so I was quite pleased with the meeting. So, before everybody leaves, I want to schedule a meeting for next beautification so we can see where, where we go, and then we can let Mr. Limina know how much money we need.
Buttered me up.
Yeah, yeah, we were getting you ready for that.
Yeah.
Mr. Ladi, anything?
So we do need a brief closed session to talk about two contract employment agreements.
Okay. Okay, somebody care to make that motion? Yes?
One point of interest.
Sure.
You guys have probably saw the weather forecast coming up, and it looks like there could be the potential for some serious ice storms. We don't close very often. If you ask the staff here, it's because you guys hired a superintendent from the UP who doesn't believe in a weather-related incident in Grand Blank Township that warrants a closure. However, if, if it were to come to fruition, and what they're predicting is to have a half inch or even up to an inch of ice on the roads, there is the potential that over the next couple of days, I may make that decision. We'll send an email out to the board so you're aware of it, but if, if that were to occur, either an early closure on Wednesday due to ice storm moving in, or if we have a delayed start on Thursday, I will, I, I just want to give you guys a heads up that, that decision, when there's weather-related closure for the township offices, I make that decision, it'll be based upon whether I, I think it's in the interest of safety for all of the employees, but you guys will be alerted if that occurs.
We value your decision, and, you know, we understand if safety is a concern, we want you to do the right thing.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll make the motion that we go into a closed session to discuss two employment contracts.
Contract agreements.
Contract agreements.
I will second that motion, Mr. Supervisor.
Okay.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to nothing at eight oh?
Six.
Six PM.
Stayed in here?
Closed.